Good evening, folks, and welcome to the Washington Township Planning Commission meeting for the month of March. Beautiful day it is, and as we always do, start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. If you will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, and now I think we have our roll call.
Fourteen.
E three?
Mr. Sacco?
Hello.
Mr. Miller?
Chair Bear.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Jasky?
Here.
Ms. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Chaplin?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Okay, everyone's here. All seven planning commissioners are present. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
With, within the...
Oh.
We're gonna request one correction, and that's to move the discussion of the implementation matrix to next month's meeting.
I will, uh, I, I, I accept that change as part of my motion.
You amend your motion here, Chair Bear?
And I support.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carried. Approval of minutes.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all, very good. Everyone eyed. Correspondence? Anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Public comments on non-agenda-related items? If anyone is here who has a thought or they would like to say something not related to anything on the agenda, you're, you're free to come up here and, you know, let us hear it. If not, we'll just move on. Okay, very good. We're moving on. Okay. Our first order of business, but before we begin, I would like to, now and then, we apprise our audience and our folks watching us at home, and I have to do a shout-out to two of our biggest fans in the Glacier Club, Dennis and Tina Stevenson. If you're watching, all right. And I believe there, there are probably quite a few people watching this evening, 'cause, you know, this is the best reality TV in all of Washington Township, believe it or, believe it or not. So, uh, I do have to make these comments about when we have a public hearing, and we do have a public hearing this evening. So, we wanna thank you for being here. This is always great when we have a lot of participation in our township. Uh, it's very important, but we have to have a process, and that's really, truly the, the paramount of what a chair does on any board or commission, to ensure there is a process to get to a just and fair result. So, you know, once we do have the motion to open the public hearing, if you wanna speak, you're gonna be welcome. We will take you orderly. We ask that you direct your comments to me, not that I want you to stare holes through me, but it's unfair to, you know, direct it to the other members up here, and they may ask you questions before you're done speaking, so don't feel like you're, you know, being snubbed here. Any kind of handouts are only accepted by the planning commission if the request is to distribute them to the planning commission and you do it through the chair. So, you know, we wanna do an orderly thing, and that's important when we have a large audience. We do have a large audience tonight, let the record reflect that. Anything electronic presented or attempted to present by anyone other than the applicant or township staff is prohibited, so we want you to keep that in mind. Another big point is to ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, which we will do, and speaking time is usually limited to about three minutes. Now, you could go overboard a little bit, but we're not looking for any filibusters. Trust me. I know everyone's got a lot to say, but we don't have all evening, and we wanna get everybody in. We don't want anybody to have, leave here frustrated, saying they didn't have a chance to speak. And, uh, speaking twice, we gotta get through everybody first, and if there's a chance for you to come up and say something again, well, so be it. We will recognize that. Uh, the follows, all of this follows our rules of procedure outlined by the Planning Commission bylaw. Believe it or not, we do have bylaws as a planning commission, and any unused time may not be given to another member, so we're not like the Congress in Washington, D.C., you know, yielding our time to somebody else. We just, uh, if you don't use your three minutes, well, we're gonna move on. And third, the process in which the final decision is made, and this is important, and decision made on all rezoning or planned unit developments and conditional rezoning requests are, are to be made by the township board. They're the authority in our township. We are a planning commission that's appointed by the authority, the township board, and what we do in making a decision that we could have this evening, a couple of, it's a recommendation to the board, and they will review that recommendation and make the final decision. So, we all know, as usually, our, our citizens are, are always respectful, and they do a great job in participating with the township. It's, uh, it's your chance to participate in government, and it's one of these rare times that, you know, we up here can be the face of government, and we try to do our best, so we know you're gonna do your best. So with that, I hope you memorized everything I said, and you follow through, but don't worry about it. Be yourself, say what you have to say, and we'll do it in an orderly, orderly fashion. That's all it amounts to. So, okay, we can go to our first, unless I miss something. With new business, I'm ready to go to the first one, letter A. Forest Ponds.
Oh, that's okay.
We have a conceptual planned unit development, of single-family residential development of sixty-nine units. The parcel is number twenty-four zero four twenty-three three hundred twenty-seven, and is located at the northeast corner of Twenty-Eight Mile and Jewel Road, and looks like we have the applicant here to present for our, for our applicant, and usually with a conceptual, just a reminder to our colleagues, we're not really voting on anything here, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna listen, listen intently about their plan, which they're gonna try to sell us as a great plan, no doubt about it, and that's essentially what we're gonna do. You know, it's, um, it's, it's good that you're here to make the presentation. I like conceptual reviews, I think we all do, 'cause it gives us a chance to think about, you know, what y'all are looking at. So, with that, your name and address if you're at the podium, and let us know.
Good evening, thank you. John Delislem with Noack &amp; Fraus, four eight six eight zero Van Dyke, Shelby Township.
I'm Ben Aloya, I'm with Aloya Law in Forty-Eight Southfield Street, welcome.
All right, thanks.
The applicant is here as well, Mr. Magnoli.
That would be Michael Magnoli?
Michael Magnoli, yes.
Oh, right in the front row. All right.
So we can take a look at the aerial photo that we provided first, and just to give everybody their bearings on, uh, the plan, the project that we're proposing here. Just to the north, or should I say the south of the school, school being at the top of the photo there, is Powell Ridge, which Mr. Magnoli prepared, and I was the engineer as well on that one. Another planned unit development, taking advantage of the property nearest the school. There's not too many residential homes, single-family, near the school, within walking distance. He's developed that site, as well as just south of Twenty-Eight Mile Road there, on the right side of Jewel, southeast corner, is Forest Brook, which is another single-family development he's done there. Learning from each of those, Powell Ridge being a large lot, hundred-foot minimum width lot, and Forest Brook being near the eighty-foot mark, we've found in the absorption rate of each of these units and what the market is bearing, that somewhere in between those two is, is where we'd like to be in terms of a single-family residence. So, with that in mind, we worked with your staff, it was very productive with some concepts. I think we had seventy-five units at one point. We had a cul-de-sac over, an irrigation pond, which if you can go to the plan now, that would be fine. If you look at the landscape plan, that gives you a little bit more perspective on the pond that we're referring to here, right by Jewel Road. On the left side of the plan, right above the cul-de-sac that's proposed, is an old irrigation pond that we were gonna fill in and, and had some additional lots, proximity to the road there. We've since backed off of that, looking at the PUD requirements, and really, it gives us an opportunity to create two park settings, and the name of the project is obviously Forest Ponds. There's wooded areas in each of the pond areas, on the south side of the site, somewhat central, right off of Twenty-Eight Mile Road, and that irrigation pond on the left side of the plan by Jewel Road. It was an opportunity to really create two separate parks for the residents, as opposed to kinda dispersing the preservation areas, you know, throughout, and putting them in rear yards, et cetera. This gives us, you know, place to go to. We've got paths proposed to get all of the residents there. And then we're also, as part of the public benefit of the PUD, interested in extending the sidewalks, as I think the engineer had recommended too, considering, you know, making that donation to link our required sidewalk in Jewel Road, which is across our frontage, continue it up to the Powell Ridge sidewalk that was completed by Mr. Magnoli a few years ago. So with that in mind, in terms of the layout of the development itself and the lots, we looked at the stormwater basin requirements of Washington Township and the county, worked with the county, met with them as well, and we've got more, I guess, land area for permanent ponds for water quality standards versus, you know, placing lots there and using a mechanical structure to, to accomplish the same means. So, going with the pond theme, we, we think we've got a winner here that gives us, you know, a lot that is optimal in size, close proximity to the school, providing a linkage to get them to the school, and preserving some, some nice natural areas that can complement the site, as well as, you know, be an amenity to the community.
Mr. Aloya, are you gonna say anything?
Uh, I'm here for any questions, but I just, I, I know you know Mr. Magnoli, I know you know his developments, he's developing...
Who doesn't know Michelangelo?
He's developed in Seven Lakes, he's, you know, obviously you've seen Forest Brook, it's been a successful development. He did Powell Ridge, it's, it's, it's moving along, it's a great development, so, and many other buildings and developments in the township. So, this is a serious development for him, he's really excited about this project, I can speak to you, and we believe that this is a proper, really a nice transition between Powell Ridge and Forest Brook and this outline, and it'll really fill in this area in between the school, provide a safe sidewalk for the students heading to school.
Yes.
It's a nice, nice connection.
Okay, commissioners, before we jump in, staff, anybody have anything they'd like to add or comment about this project? Kayla?
I'll go first, 'cause yours is probably...
President Kozak? All right.
Yeah, you have our letter. We, we, on these conceptual PDs, try to go through the main systems and just give you kind of the heads-up. Obviously, utilities are not gonna be an issue at this site. Our biggest comment, and I, I think the applicant addressed it in, in some form or fashion, is just some additional off-site connections for sidewalks. The township obviously invested a lot of money putting sidewalks in around the school complexes to the north of Powell Ridge. Powell Ridge had some off-site sidewalk as well to connect to that. This would really provide nice connectivity. There is one small piece that you can see there where there is an existing home that's gonna remain, that, again, we would suggest that that small piece at least be connected as well. Certainly in the formal PUD, they can address that, but just a full connectivity of kind of, just because their site has right-of-way carved out at Twenty-Eight and Jewel, because of the kind of goofy M-dot right-of-way there.
Yeah, yeah.
I know it's gonna be a little more work for them to go through that permit process, but again, sidewalks should go at least all the way to that corner, it just makes sense. So, some additional connectivity there. But utility-wise, we don't see any major issues, and obviously, plenty of stormwater management as a, as a part of the site, just based on kind of the nature of the house.
Okay. All right. Kayla?
Yeah, similar to, to Mike's comments, what we're looking at here is just alignment with your ordinances and anything that could be done to strengthen it in line with the goals of the PUD ordinance. So, related to that, we had some comments about enhancing the usable open space, and more importantly, making sure, you know, if pathways are accepted as part of the open space development, that they're meaningful. So, you know, connecting, connecting the sidewalk back into the development sidewalk network versus tying into the pond access drive, and then also on the west end there of the development, you know, that, that pathway connecting into the sidewalk that you're actually providing along Jewel Road versus these, these one-way or, or done-end sidewalks. Another thing we noted is that there's only two designs shown right now for the front elevations, and per ordinance, there'd have to be at least three to meet the requirement that there's two different facades between homes before they repeat. So those were a few things that we caught. The rest is just, you know, things that the planning commission could recommend to, again, strengthen the development.
Okay, thank you. Kayla Walden is our community planner, Michael Kozak's our civil engineer, Dana at the end there, as you've seen her many, many, many times, she's our director of planning and zoning. I just, I just have a question. I see one boulevard entry going into the, into the development. I thought in pre-planning, there was another way in and out of that development.
It connects up to Powell Ridge.
Powell Ridge, okay. Okay, very good. Can you, where is it up on the screen? Can you point it out?
In the north, the north property line.
Aerial, which, yeah.
Okay. All right, very good. Yeah, that's a good thing, you know, if you don't, if you don't have two, it'd be a little different, pretty, a little different scheduling there for what had to be done. Very good. And who wouldn't be excited this being right next to the school? I mean, how often do kids get the chance to, to walk to school? You're gonna actually walk to Powell Middle, well, it's Academy now, just ninth grade, but gee, to be that close is exciting, so I'm sure the school's excited about it as well. But anyway, commissioners, you got anything else you'd like to, question, the applicant?
One question. What type of, Bob, homes do you intend on building, as far as construction?
My, Michael, I'm the owner of Michelangelo. The same homes that we have at Forest Brook will be the same homes that we're gonna transition over to their, they're all brick. We landscape every house, all the homes come with all the appliances, we make a turnkey product. When we did it at Forest Brook, we had everything, nobody came to the ZVA, 'cause when we completed the homes, we got our certificate of occupancy, then we sold the homes. So they'll be complete brickstone, we don't use any, any siding, they're all side turn. We squeeze them in eighty foot, it's tough, but with the extra ten feet at ninety foot is a lot easier for me to build those. At Powell Ridge, you know, I, I deal a lot with Todd Robinson, the school district, I own Seven Lakes, million-dollar houses, they don't get to see a lot of kids, they're excited because these are more affordable homes. they're excited because these are more affordable homes like Forest Brook, and they're, you know, gonna see more kids coming into the school system, walking to the school. At Powell Ridge, we have a gate that allows them to get cut right through Powell Ridge to the school, they never have to go on Jewel. I'm gonna put all the sidewalks to accommodate all the kids, you know, if they wanna go fishing in that little pond or whatever they wanna do, but they'll walk through, uh, Forest Ponds, through Powell Ridge, and we have a gate connected to the school, so they never have to go to the main road.
Beautiful.
Yeah?
Yeah. I, I mean, I commend you, the, the architectural features, the two, two elevations you did show are very nice, they, I mean, it kinda meets what we're looking for, it's side entrance garages on all, those are the kind of things we like to see on the PUDs, it's stuff that boulevard entrances, obviously now are the standard, but, um, yeah, I mean, the, I know there was a comment by the planner regarding the density, um, regarding, there was a conflict in the, uh, yield plan as opposed to what the zoning district, could you speak to that?
Yeah, so, so just to clarify, with the PUD, typically they're looking for waivers from the dimensional standards, so the applicant would have to specify that when they come in for the preliminary PUD. Um, what we looked at in our review is just the comparison between the current zoning, um, the R1D, which is kinda what this falls in line with, and then also what the, uh, future land use map recommends. So the range that we provided, um, and that was in the yield analysis, um, is what your master plan kind of indicates. Um, what they're coming in with are a few more lots than, than that range.
Right, and that's where we get the give and take, is they're gonna get a few more lots, we get the connection to the school, the nicer elevations, the side entrance garage, um, okay, I, I got you. So the yield plan that you had discussed was the 40, or that you had noted was the 44 to 61 would fall in line with the master plan, they're proposing 69, okay.
And that yield plan was provided.
By them?
Yep.
Right, you commented on that, I'm sorry. Perfect, thank you.
Excuse me, anyone else, Commissioners? Okay, well, with that, Counselor, anything, uh, you have, um?
Not for conceptual, no.
Not for conceptual, okay. Well, I think you've done a good job of letting us know what your plan unit development looks like and intends to do and benefit the community, and that's really one of the primo objectives. And, uh, we thank you for your, for your effort here tonight. See where it goes.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Okay. Okay, we'll, uh, move on to the, uh, second, uh, new business, uh, and that'll be the Reserve of Washington Point, and, uh, this is a, a public hearing request, and, uh, the quest is, uh, for rezoning, uh, R1B to R1D, uh, the parcel involved is number 2404333047. And, uh, our applicant, uh, I would imagine is here, they're approaching the, uh, the podium, okay, and name, address, whatever.
Brad Cordy, uh, 57300 Mount Vernon, also a resident of Washington Township.
Okay.
I didn't have to go too far, Ben Aloya, 48 South Main Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 48043, and we do have one more, uh, member of our team approaching.
Benny Biondo, address is 2561 Pebble Beach Drive, Oakland Township, Mich- Michigan, 48363.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, thank you, and, uh, let us, uh, let us hear what you got.
Sure. Can we put the plan up? Is there, can we put our, the plan we submitted as part of it? Does, does he have the plan or not? As part that we submitted or no?
Um, it would be on the website.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll hold off on that then.
Uh, once again, my name is Ben Aloya, I represent BioCore Development. Um, we are asking for a rezoning to R1D for a 24-unit residential development named the Reserve of, of Washington Township. This is approximately a 14.5, uh, acre si- site. Um, we out, we did submit a conceptual plan which outlines, uh, 24 units, um, and as you'll note, uh, where this is located, this is the east side of mound, north of 26 Mile. It is currently, uh, master planned R1B. Um, so as reflected in the conceptual plan, approximately 12.8 acres of the site are buildable, um, and that's less the mound road right-of-way. Um, it is very limited by the existing wetlands and ponds on the site, um, and so as you'll note on the conceptual plan, about 5.12 acres of approximate open space is there, which is 35% of the site area. As you know, if you had a PUD, it'd have to be a minimum of 15, this is 35, um, and this includes the existing pond on site, which we, we intend to preserve so that the kids can fish and the people can enjoy it on the site, and a proposed detention pond, uh, which is about an acre and a half with those two ponds. The wetlands are approximately an acre on the site, and the overall green space is measured at about two and a half acres. So due to this limited buildable area, uh, we, we outlined, uh, the only real viable outline that we could do with these units. Now, um, you know, we feel that it's, we tried to lay it out in the R1B designation with all of the topography out there, and we really rendered it really impossible to be able to develop it for these purposes. Um, we did try to maximize the, the, the width. If you remember, we were here for a condition, rezoning at some time last year, um, and we know how popular it was, cause everyone's back to, to, to visit again, uh, but we did expand the lots, we have some 100-foot wide lots, we have 80-footers, and before we had more 60-footers, the minimum we have is about 70. But these lots are very deep, as you know, and you can see, and so these are generous lots, not necessarily in width, but in depth, and the benefit is most of these lots surround either open space or, or, um, green space, um, the detention pond, the fishing pond, I mean, this is gonna be an absolutely beautiful development, and, um, the, the houses, and I think last time, you know, I, we were a bit misguided. I think, you know, we talked about, you know, trailside next door, and it was smaller, and that this is comparable, we're not trying to be trailside. And really, we have a video, um, LaSalle Homes is a partner in this development, they're a partner in the land, they're gonna build here along with Mr. Cordy, and we have, they, they are the builders in Veridian. And Veridian, those homes are currently being sold between 930,000 to over a million, a million?
Million-one.
Million-one, and, and the average sizes are about-
Yeah, the average size is about 2,500 square feet, and, uh, building mostly ranches for, um, ranch homes in there, all you're nice, nicely appointed, average square feet is about $361 per square foot, so, they're all higher-end, upscale homes that we're building in the Villas of Veridian off of 26 Mile and Shaner, not sure if anybody's been there. So it's been very successful there, very good, a lot of, you know, a lot of interest because it's hard to find a product like that, where especially where, uh, you have, uh, people downsizing, empty nesters, moving out of their, you know, their larger homes, they've been, that's been a focus of our clientele there, just more, something more downsized, but at the same time, they wanna keep something more upscale, higher-end, where, you know, they're coming in out of their bigger home, but wanna stay in the area and what have you, so.
And they're turnkey, right?
And they're turnkey. Everything's turnkey, in there they come landscaped, appliances, we have the association that takes care of all the maintenance, snow, the snow removal, the lawn care, everything, so especially a lot of people, they, you know, the, the snowbirds that go to Florida in the wintertime or what have you, they don't have to worry about their snow being removed, everything is, is taken care of by the association there. So it's, you know, we found a little niche market there, figuring out a lot of people that have been in the area, that grew up in the area, that love the area, kids are leaving, and, um, they wanna, you know, something more, you know, manageable, and at the same time, they can still stay in the area and maintain, uh, the higher quality of homes that, you know, they're, you, they're accustomed to in, uh, in the community.
You have a video of the-
Yeah, we have a video, yeah.
The, the type of homes that we're gonna build there.
Okay, thank you.
Really fast, I hope everybody saw it. Got nice music to it.
Kind of a slideshow?
Excuse me, and, and again, these homes are what size?
They're gonna range roughly between 2,100 square feet and 2,600 square feet, depending on which elevation and-
Okay, in ranches?
Mostly ranches. Some will have an, an option on a loft, second floor, but we're finding that most people that are looking for that type of product really don't wanna deal with the stairs and deal with the second floor, even if it is, you know, once a month, a vacuum or whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
And, and they do, they do come with finished basements, right?
It's always an option, the finished basements, and a lot of the daylights and walkouts that are available, those will instantly be turnkey all the way.
I'd assume most of those walkouts would be on the side towards the wetlands and-
South side, yes. The north side is actually reverse walkout, it's very challenging topography.
Yeah.
Just if I can, um, just quickly, just remind that the rezoning request is, is just that, it's not associated with the actual plan being presented, that's just conceptual as to what-
Yeah.
You know, they would like to build, but the rezoning itself isn't tied to the actual plan.
Nico, you having any luck there?
Working.
All right. If this is the case, it's gonna determine whether you get to Hollywood or not next week. I don't wanna put any pressure on you.
So, wh- while we're waiting, I just wanna ma- you know, make a few comments. I know we got the comments last week, um, we did submit the updated maps, but I know the rule here is after we get the comments back, was not, not enough time to get it to the commission, so we did get those maps over to them. Um, and, you know, the comments, I think, in terms of, you know, whether there should be a traffic study or not, I mean, the comment, and we agree with it, that we, we'd ask the planning commission to waive that, that, that it's not gonna be a remarkable increase. I mean, you have 24 units there, uh, maybe three, three cars per, per household and an Amazon van, of course, and so maybe it's four, but, um, but we, we, you know, it's, it's very low, it's mound road, and we don't believe it's gonna be significant impact. Um, the, the comments that, and I'll, I'll let, I'll let the, uh, the staff comment as the rest of it, but, but we're receptive to them.
All right.
If we can't get the video, I guess we can continue, and if he's ready, he can let us know.
Yeah, I had a-
Okay, give it, give us your best shot, Nico. I'll still recommend you to Hollywood.
I know it all works until you try it. Mm-hmm. If you notice, they're all brick, limestone surrounds on the windows, they're all Anderson windows, or equivalent, landscaping, like we said, will be included, all dimensional shingles be included.
Okay. All right.
Loose guy?
Loose guy, yeah.
Of course it's included. That's a given.
Yeah, we have all high-end quality, you know, features in the house, 10-foot-high ceilings, high-end, you know, custom closets, quartz throughout, upper, you know, I under, uh, cabinetry, tilework, I mean, you know, try to compact it onto one house where we-
Yeah.
Good job, Nico.
The downsized.
Nice-looking homes. I, I mean, the big thing, though, is obviously the rezoning can't be tied to what you're presenting on the houses, so it, I, my biggest concern would be for owners that abut this. I, I mean, I've, I bought land knowing what I was zoned next door to me, and now you're cutting that density in half, or doubling it, I'm sorry, and I know if that was my house next door, I'd lose my mind.
Well, you're technically not doubling it because of the, all the open space, the ponds that are being left, all of the open space that's being left and not-
I, I understand that, but when you bought that property, you understood the amount of developing, developable land you were buying, and there's plenty of land throughout Clinton Township that fall within that zoning. So I just don't understand why we would entertain giving up, giving density to a parcel that, in all reality, I mean, if I'd have bought the lot, I mean, I'd have bought the lot next door and I said, "Well, that one's R1B, this is what could be built there." Not, and, and I would say, "Well, they can't build that because it's got rivers, it's got wetlands, it's got that information, it's got that stuff on it, and why would we wanna allow a double, double the density, you know, on a parcel?" I just don't understand what the good, good in the community. It doesn't, it doesn't lead to a benefit.
Yeah, I, although, although trailside is on the one side, it's more dense.
I, I get that, but we didn't want-
And the other one is a sea-
We didn't, we didn't allow that, that was brought to us as a, as a consent.
You're right, it is, it was brought to you as a consent, and trailside would technically be the only development that touches this property. To the north is a large estate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, with, so that's one property.
Yeah.
On both sides of it are the people that we actually bought it from, one I believe is five acres, the other one's just over an acre, if I remember correctly. So the, there's only, I believe, two parcels in trailside that actually abut to this property, and where they actually abut to the property would not be touched.
I get it, but I just see, all I see is precedence being set, I mean-
The precedence being set would be trailside, which would be next door.
That's not precedence, that was a consent.
It's a consent, but it's established.
Hold it all till the end.
Let us, let us hold our meeting.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
And the, the reason why, you know, we're in the R1D is really the side setbacks, cause the depths are generous on these lots, and I hope you, you see that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Steph, um, before, you, do you have any questions of the applicants, uh, before we move on with any other questions, or maybe we have a public hearing first?
Well, I'd have them go through the reviews first.
Oh, okay, very good. That's what I thought.
You don't want?
Yeah, no, that's what I thought.
Um, you, you have our letter, as indicated, the development impact statement was lacking and missing a lot of information, and only applicant has made revisions, but we have not reviewed that. Um, again, we only look at things from a ability to provide utility services, there is adequate, the, the nominal increase in lots that you would have with the rezoning change can be handled by the water and sewer systems in the township, that's not a thing that should stop this, but it's not to say, again, I only comment on the utilities that are there, right? Um, stormwater can be handled, there's obviously outlets in the site, existing ponds, wetlands, areas where they can still, uh, construct ponds if they need to, again, ignoring entirely what has been presented as a site plan, it can be done, it can be accommodated. Um, and they did not, uh, include, uh, excuse me, traffic im- impact analysis. Um, I, I wouldn't disagree that there would be a nominal increase, mound road's a major road, but there would just be a nominal increase with some additional homes here than you might get it with the existing zoning. Um, so, um, again, I think this is gonna fall more into a, a planning si- standpoint of lot sizes, what's there, what could be there, um, utilities are sufficient with what is existing.
You all set, Mike?
All set.
All right, uh, Kayla?
And then you have our review letter as well, um, so there, there are a number of criteria that the planning commission is responsible at looking at, um, according to your zoning ordinance. Uh, the key there is the master plan and whether this aligns with your master plan. Um, I will note what the applicant is proposing is not a change of use, uh, from your future land use map or from the zoning, but it's, it's dimensional. Um, and so the future land use map recommends lot sizes between 20 and 30,000, um, what's being proposed here is, is less than that. Um, the other thing to note is that there is an additional option available to the developer, um, outside of a rezoning, right? If you find that this isn't in line with the land uses and the future land use map, they have the option to go through that PUD tool that allows some of that variation and, and flexibility from the, um, dimensional standards, and so the need for a rezone isn't, isn't necessarily clear on this parcel.
All right, Kayla, thank you. Uh, Dana, anything? Okay, Steph, I, I think, uh, maybe, um, quite a few folks here wanna speak, uh, might be a good time to get a motion to open our public hearing.
Support.
All right, all in favor? All right, public hearing is, uh, opened here in the rezoning request, and just briefly, I don't wanna put anybody to sleep, but, uh, part of the relevant material here is the notice was done, set, uh, sent out by our secretary, Ron Jaski, uh, on the planning commission to, to our right, to your left, and, uh, purpose of the public hearing always is to hear and receive comments related to a proposed rezoning request from the applicants you just heard, and that's, uh, submitted for review under Article 7.0 Administration Appeals and Enforcement, Section 7.12 Ordinance Amendments, including rezoning, rezoning by, made by BioCore Development LLC, located at 7067 Cordy Road, Bruce Township, Michigan 4806- located at 7067 Cordy Road, Bruce Township, Michigan 48065. I'll do the parcel number and the legal, I'll put it to sleep, put you all to sleep if I read it, but the parcel number is 240433300-047 and it is located, as applicant said, on the east side of Mound Road, north of 26 Mile Road. Current zoning is single-family residential R1B. The rezoning request is for single-family residential R1D. The name Reserve of Washington Township. This was published February 26, 2025. And if you folks would like to orderly come up to the podium, state your name and address and what you have to tell us, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Michael Servanek residing at 5798 Brookside Lane, 48094. I serve as a board member and officer of the Crystal Creek Subdivision Association, speaking tonight on behalf of Crystal Creek's 250 home and lot owners located immediately west of the applicant's parcel. It is regrettable that we are here once again nearly two years following the applicant's initial August 2023, not last year, appearance, seeking rezoning of the parcel from its current 1B district to a higher-density 1C district back in 2023. This second zoning attempt is a revised application. The revised application outrageously now seeks rezoning of the property from R1B to an even higher-density R1D district. An R1D zoning district status, forget the conceptual, you can use that as a scratch pad. Would it conceivably enable the developer to construct minimum-sized 1,000-square-foot ranch and 1,200-square-foot story and a half single-family homes on minimal lot sizes of 10,000 square feet with 70-foot frontage? The planning commission has historically exhibited its wisdom and resolve in maintaining Washington Township's master plan vision for low to moderate, single-family residential development. And you're to be commended for your leadership in this regard. This 14-and-a-half-acre parcel is located at the gateway to Washington Township's premier Mound Road residential corridor that spans six miles from 26 Mile to 32 Mile Road. With its rolling topography and mature woodland canopy to the south and vintage farmlands and natural water features to the north, Washington Township's Mound Road corridor is the most inviting residential area in Macomb County. Over the years, residential development of this corridor has consisted of attractive, single-family residences constructed in master plan conforming low to moderate, single-family home zoning districts. For most of us, the decision to live in Washington was based on its semi-rural character and charm and its master plan low to moderate-density zoning districts with houses situated on one-half, one, two, and three-acre lots. We urge the planning commission to continue to shun any development effort, developer efforts that would tarnish the character of our community by rezoning low to moderate-density zone parcels to higher-density, single-family residential development. Accordingly, I am respectfully requesting that the planning commission's deliberation of this application for rezoning result in unanimous disapproval. In closing, I would like to summon, somewhat tongue-in-cheek, additionally request that PC Chair Sacco seek Supervisor Pravidi's approval to permanently post this sign at the primary entrances to the Washington Township Municipal Center. As a stop sign, residential developers seeking rezoning of their Washington Township property to a higher-density district need not apply.
Thank you, Mike. Who, who is next?
Mark Van Renen, 4952 Brookside Lane, Washington Township. I'm also a board member at Crystal Creek. I've lived there for 14 years. One of the reasons I purchased the property was what I consider fairly small lots. I wish they were larger, but they're twice as large as what is being developed here. I can't believe that someone would propose to build what allegedly is a $900,000 house on such a small lot, but that's, I guess, the preference of a purchaser. And I'm disappointed that two years after the applicants came for, to discuss a zoning change from R1B to R1C, that they're back again. And as Mike had indicated, now they're wanting an even smaller lot size, R1D, a minimum of possibly 10,000 square feet. I'm very disappointed. I was encouraged when I saw the Washington Township's master plan that was adopted in 2024. And I thought it showed a lot of wisdom. There was a tremendous process that the city went through, the township went through involving open houses, community surveys and public meetings. And the result of that was that that parcel of land was zoned and will continue to be zoned R1B. And I consider, even though I'm across the street from that development, I'm just west of it across Mound, I'm an adjacent property owner to that. And I feel that such a development would devalue my property values. And I'm very much opposed to that. And the developer was mentioning the fact that the only financially viable option for them is to develop the property as R1D. When they bought the property, it was zoned R1B, not R1D. So they were well aware, or should have been if they had done their due diligence, what it was zoned at. And if they're expert developers, they would, should have known the cost involved in developing that parcel as an R1B project. So to say it's not economically viable is not an argument that I think should be entertained or sustained. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We know you appreciate your resonance. If you will, there's really no need for you to repeat what the prior board member or person says up there. We'd like to hear some fresh information. And we're listening very intently to what everyone says. So, you know, it can be a long night or it can be a reasonably short night. But nonetheless, there's no need to repeat over and over and over. But so far, we're doing good.
Good eve, good evening. My name is Barry Dodson. I live on Deer Creek Circle in Crystal Creek. I am not one of the board members. We moved here from Rochester Hills because of the traffic congestion and gridlock there every afternoon trying to get home or move around. We moved out to Washington Township for the semi-rural area. We've been here approximately nine years. We love our subdivision and the semi-rural area. Unfortunately, it is building up at a rapid pace. Traffic on Mound Road has gotten terrible in the last eight or nine years. 26 Mile Road is, in the morning, is a nightmare trying to get out of our subdivision. And my other fear is, other than the traffic problems with a considerably larger sub right across the street from us is getting in and out of that subdivision because I'm assuming the entrance is going to be just about where it is now, which is just south of our entrance. And then my other problem is property values on our home. I believe our sub is one of the nicer subs in this whole area, other than perhaps Branbury that's up the street here a ways. But other than that, it's maintained very well. It's been kept up and we'd like to keep it the way it is and the neighborhood the way it is. Thank you for your time.
I thank you, Barry. Okay, we would like to follow Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Dennis Ramis. I live at 5747 Brookside, 32-year resident and have watched the township grow. I commend this commission on their work. Other than the fire, police, and education of our children, this is the most important thing that happens here. And your master plan is excellent, was excellent, well-thought-out. To ask for changes to that's almost offensive to you, I would think. However, my concern as a family physician is safety. And I see that traffic and I'd like to see a traffic study. It backs up. There's been a lot of development over 32 years. There aren't enough lights around to save people. I see the school bus stop south of there, watching kids get on. I'm concerned with that, even a minimal amount of increased traffic and a potential accident. And one of them isn't worth those extra 12, 14 homes that are going to be put in there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doctor.
Hi, my name is Dave Amon. I live on 5309 Brookside Lane. I've been there 33 years. How you doing, Dennis? And just like Dennis, I know you don't want to repeat the same thing, but traffic is a problem. Coming out Brookside Lane, if you want to go north on Brookside Lane, you've got to pull your car all the way out till the front bumper is past the southbound lane on the right side. Because there's a big hill, you can't see it. Most of the people that I know that live on Brookside Lane go down and go to Crystal Creek, so they can turn. I've asked last time we were here, maybe they could cut the hill down or something else. But now when you're adding these extra homes with another 50 or 60 cars that we were talking about earlier, and where they're going to put the dry entrance to that new subdivision is 50 feet from where you've got to turn. So not only do you have to pull your car out into the southbound lane, you've got to watch now for people coming this way and you can't see the light until you get past the center of the southbound lane. Many times, I've gone out there and had to slam on the brakes and look at the car coming at me at the, from the southbound lane. I'm not a bad driver, but I've never had an accident. But I, I suggest everybody here and the builder to please come out Brookside Lane at 5:30 in the afternoon. See what happens. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Good evening, everybody. Rich Dorsh, 5743 Crystal Creek Court. I find this appalling that they're taking up your time and my time to come here and ask for something even less than what they originally started with. So I beg you unequivocally to tell these people to go home and don't come back. Thank you.
Okay, well, we appreciate that, Rich, but property owner has, has their privileges. They have their rights and we as authority, we have to honor that. They requested to be on our agenda and, you know, they put it, put together enough to get on the agenda. Well, I, I hear you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Pat Johnson. I live at 57483 Junction Court. And I am the house on Junction Court in Trailside that will now see these homes out my back window. And I am mad as hell about that, as you stated. We bought here 10 years ago. Being able to look out onto woods was our dream. We retired. We loved Washington Township. And now that's all going to be built up. All the wildlife in there will all be displaced. All the traffic, as everyone has stated, will be ridiculous. That's all I have to say and thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, who's following Pat?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Okay.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we've heard from the public this evening. Commissioners, now's a chance to ask our applicants, you know what we think?
There were comments received.
Yeah, you're right, Dana. I'm sorry. Yes, there were. Did you want to read them or do you want to denote that they came? One email at least, maybe two. Was there more than two? How many?
I think there were three or four.
Three or four?
Mr. Chair, you can either read them or since all the planning commissioners have them, you can make a motion to receive and file.
That sounds very good and I would do that. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file, commissioners. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Those were emails. There was one written. Did we include the one written too?
Yes.
Very good. And folks, this is part of the record and the commissioners will review them as they are doing right now. They aren't very lengthy, but I would have to say in summarizing, they're pretty much what you all have said so far. So I don't think there's any surprise there. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Counselor?
Yes.
We may ask you some questions now. Are you ready?
I'm absolutely ready.
All right. You want to comment on the public comments or do you want?
I, I just want to clarify a point and I know that there are people who are insulted here. No one's trying to insult anybody. We're trying to develop a piece of property. If there's any residential development there, whether it's 15 units, 24 units, trees are going to get removed, that's the right of the developer and the owner of that property. So I understand that that's upsetting to some people. We're not trying to upset anybody. The other thing is, is that I think there's some misconception. We did reduce the number of lots from our last application by three and we did widen the lots. The other lots were a minimum of 60 feet wide. We have mostly 80 footers and 100 footers and some 70s. But we did hear the comments last time. We tried to do the best that we could, given what we, the challenges on, on the lot, and we did make them wider and we reduced the number of lots. We also added the boulevard and other features. So we did try to improve the plan. It may not be to some satisfaction, we understand that, but we're not trying to insult anybody. And when we came in last time, we had, it was a conditional rezoning under R1C. I know the comment was from planning that we picked the wrong designation, really. It should have really been under R1D. So we're not trying to like do a trick bag here and like try to go lower density. We actually lessened the number of units, increased the sizes of the lots and we're consistent with what your ordinance states.
Counselor, what I had said early on at the beginning about the authority of the Board of Trustees.
Yes.
We as a Board of, Planning Commission, Planning Commission.
Yes.
We make a recommendation. They have the authority. They can say yes to what we recommend or say no to what we recommend. So that's an aspect I don't want people to lose sight of. This is at the, the end of the road, so to speak here. But a lot of folks get confused about, you know, what a final decision may look like. We are an authority, but we're only a recommender in this kind of, of application to the board.
We understand, we, we appreciate that.
Okay, you're welcome. Commissioners, any questions, more we want to ask of the applicant?
I think I stated what I did earlier and it obviously rings solid with the people in the neighboring community. in the neighboring community. I just think it's too dense for the property. There's ways to develop this differently that could achieve an R1B. You just won't get the number of lots you were seeking today. We can't tie your layout to what you will submit at a later date. And as someone had stated, you could come back with the minimum standards and build whatever you wanted at that point, and it would be way too dense for what we're looking for. I'll let the other Commissioners move forward, but I'm heavily on the no side.
I think we have to look at our master plan, which we just spent three years updating, and that's our guide here, is our master plan.
Can I ask when you acquired the property?
Approximately three years ago.
Okay. So the zoning's been consistent over the time you've owned it? Okay. And, you know, and that's really what we're looking at. You know, this, it's a zoning request. You know, the financial side for the developer, we can't really take that into consideration.
Honestly, no one's ever brought that up.
And, you know, I'm looking at the, you know, the area, and I think, you know, in a way, you're going in the wrong direction, because if you look at our zoning, this is an R1B. If you look at our master plan that we've just recently updated, this is a moderate density. And then what the moderate density does for the future, it captures the R1B and the R1A in that same district. So instead of just a strict 20,000 square foot lot, we're looking at development for the future, 20,000 to 30,000 square feet. So we're actually looking at larger lots for future development, if you reference our master plan. So it's kind of going in a little different direction than you're going. And then I, and I look at the general area, and, you know, one of the things I'm asking myself is, is it consistent with what's there? And if we, if we do grant this, you know, is it going to create a spot zoning? Or are we going to have an inconsistent district there? You know, obviously, you know, the south of you, there's a consent judgment. Really can't consider that as a zoning issue. You've got single-family residential against your property. You've got a very large estate to the north. It really then does put us in a position where we're creating a single zoning entity that's inconsistent with the rest of the area. So those are the things I'm looking at when I'm deciding which way to go on this. But overall, if I, if I take away, you know, the things that I would be considering as a developer, I can't see that the property couldn't be developed as it sits. You know, it may not be the financial outcome that you want, but we can't consider that. So, you know, there's no bar to you developing the property with an R1B zoning that I could see at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Commissioners, anyone else? John, Ron, did you have anything? You all right? Peter?
Well, I heard my thoughts already, so...
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, before we can get into a motion, and one last time, anything else we have up here, staff, Commissioners? Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I would, I would just like to remind the Commission that when you're looking at this, you're not looking just at your master plan. You're also looking at surrounding zoning districts, surrounding zoning, surrounding uses of the property. Those things must be taken into account as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, with that, if somebody is up for making a motion, then we're ready to hear it.
I'll make a motion to recommend denial to the Township Board for the rezoning request of the R1B single-family district to an R1D single-family residential submitted for the reserve of Washington Township, parcel 2404-33300-047, based on the following findings of fact. Based on it not being consistent with the master plan, the property's ability to develop with less lots of a larger size, and the ability of lots, of the lots of the property throughout Washington Township, there are lots of properties throughout Washington Township that do meet this zoning that you're seeking. And it's a not, not a logical extension with the property and the districts to the north. I don't, we can't take into consideration any of the paperwork as submitted as a conditional, because it was not submitted as a conditional. So the designs are, in a sense, useless to us at this time. Being double the density of the property, I recommend that denial.
Is that a complete motion?
Sure.
Anyone want to add anything to that? Okay, we need a second.
Support.
John, second? Okay. Dana, we can do a roll.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Chaplin?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Sacco?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Jasky?
Yes, to deny.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes, to deny.
Okay. Motion fail, uh, motion passes. Application denied, and wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Recommend to the Township Board.
The motion is to recommend denial to the Board of Trustees, which, if they haven't heard it already, they will. Okay.
We hear it.
Are you ready to move on?
Mr. Chair, Chair Bob, if you want to just let everyone know, we still have...
Yeah.
Use your gavel.
Yes.
There you go.
Folks, we, we have other, another item on the agenda. If you all would do the caucusing out in the hallway, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Caucusing and celebrating, yes. Chair Barry, when you were commenting earlier on, you had something, you included clip times. Yeah, you did. Way back in the beginning, when you were talking about, the first time you talked about density.
Yeah. Tell me what, say something else.
Yes, sir.
No.
Oh, that's our, that's our man. Why, sure.
What?
Podium. Podium. Question. We got a resident inquiring.
Inquiring minds want to know.
My name is Alvin Smith. For those of you that don't know, I'm the local, I'm the president of the local handsome club of Washington Township.
Okay.
I serve with complete irony and paradox.
Oh, very good.
As you can see. The question is, will there be, when can we ask questions about...
The first item on the agenda?
Yes.
Probably when they come back for their public hearing.
Well, yeah, the next, the formal.
The formal.
When they have a formal submittal.
Okay.
That was just the conceptual.
Yeah.
And at that time, they'll be back with a formal, a formal submitted plan.
And all that will be published when that day is?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good to see you. Okay. All right. I think the room is somewhat cleared. And we move on to our, our old business, and that is Washington Creek. Old business, letter A. Public hearing is closed. We've had a public hearing. This is a formal planned unit development, multi-family and single-family residential development at 13685 31 Mile Road. Parcel is 240401-3013. It's 70-plus acres. It's on the north side of 31 Mile, east of M53, and I believe we have our applicants here who are going to inform us of their, their plan.
Good evening. My name is Felina Pasquale, landscape architect. Address is 243333 Orchard Lake Road, Farmington Hills. With me here is David De Vuca, the project sponsor with Contour Development. Greg Ezo with SM Engineering, I'm the project engineer, and also Mike...
I was stumbling in.
Pazola with Design House, the project architect.
All right.
I guess you guys are familiar with this project, since this is an old business. And I don't know if I have to go through the full spiel, or do I just go straight to the plan, I guess?
I'd go to the changes, which I didn't see a whole heck of a lot of them, but I'd love to hear about what might be changing that I can't see.
Well, I think since January, what we've done is, a lot of the comments was, for the single-family, the, some of the corner lots, we weren't complying. They had to be 95-foot wide. So with regards to that, you know, all the corner lots with all the single-family are all now 95. So under the R1D, this meets all the requirements under the R1D zoning designation. A lot of the changes that happened is really in the open space, I guess. I mean, let me see here. I mean, get my thoughts here. So with that being said, the number of units we're now proposing is 298 units. Out of that 298 units, we're proposing 108 single-family, 70-foot by 143. Corner lots now are all 95 feet. Out of that, 190 are multifamily, 154 that are townhouses, and 36 are stacked unit. Units. So these are all the townhouses right here. These are all the stacked units. These are all townhouses here. In terms of the layout, the layout hasn't really changed as much because of the site configuration. It's a very challenging site. It's not a square lot. It's, you know, a lot of jigs and jogs in the property. So in terms of road circulation, there's not a lot of things that we can do to improve that, I guess. We are, we have, still the two drains are running through that, which we worked around, around in our layout. Now, in terms of density, the allowable density, based on, you know, your master plan, which is suburban and also multifamily, we're allowed 382 units. We are proposing 298, which, an overall density of that is nine-point, I'm sorry, 3.9. Single-family is about 2.1, and the manufacturer, I mean, the multifamily is 6.3. Those, those density falls pretty much in line with your master plan, and really kind of in the medium side, in the lower medium side of that, of your master plan. Going through the next sheets, we're also asking, because, because we are going under the PUD, we're also asking for some modification or some waivers. Some of the waivers we're requesting is these buildings along here to have a setback of 30 feet. Also some modification of setbacks on these building facing along M53. We're also requesting some waivers on the green belt requirement that connects the road, the right, the public road from the multifamily to the single family because of the area that's available. We don't have the room to provide that green belt requirement, which we're asking for. And also, we're also asking for some waivers on some of the landscape requirements along this area, along this area, and also the green belt along this area. With this PUD plan, the PUD requires 15% open space, which equates to about 10.43. We are now proposing 19%, which is 13 acres, I'm, 13 acres. And that's highlighted in the green area. And in that open space, we are proposing a series of amenities such as bike racks, park benches, meandering trails throughout the whole subdivision and multifamily. We're also proposing a clubhouse. In the last planning commission meeting, our clubhouse was about 1,700. We've increased that now to 3,200 square feet. There was some concern with the parking requirement, and we've also increased our parking from, I think, seven to now 11, which, which now meets the fire code requirement from the fire department. We're also proposing some fountains in the ponds, some gazebos and pergolas at the entrances here and over here, some, you know, pond overlooks on the, where the benches are located on these ponds. Some decorative streetlights throughout the whole project, some nice entrance features at both entrances. Both of them are boulevards. And these are some elevation perspective of the clubhouse facility, which is now 3,200 square feet. In your packet there, I think it was labeled that 17, there was, there was an oversight in our park, and that this, this elevation. And this plan is actually now 3,200 square feet. It includes some exercise facilities, a fitness center, as well as a swimming pool, an outdoor seating area. This is the view of the stacked units, the front elevation. This is the view of the townhouse units. This is a perspective view of the clubhouse facility. This is the rear. This is the front. This is a view of the stacked units from looking at it a vista point here. And then these are some townhouse units here. These are the single-family architectural. They're roughly about 2,500 to 3,000 square foot. We'd increase those sizes, and we've revised the elevations. They're now brick and stone. And I think in terms of price range, we're looking at about $600,000 to $700,000.
Brick or stone, just on the front facade, or is it, what's your side, sides and back?
Mostly brick. And then all the, the elevations are on...
Mostly brick, like up to the first floor level?
Higher than that.
Okay. So the whole first floor?
Whole first, front of first floor.
And then siding from...
Most of the back as well.
And then with the multiple units or multi-units, they're, you know, they're white. What does that mean?
That's actually a culture stone, and some hardy siding and brick as well. We're going to meet the requirements on the front elevations to have all...
So what percentage would be masonry?
I think it's over 92, 93 percent.
Masonry, does that include hardy board?
No.
Is masonry?
No.
Okay. So again, if you go back to the last picture, please. So I'm looking at that. I'm seeing some brick accent, and then the white is?
Stone.
Stone.
And then every, every unit has a two-car garage, whether it's a multifamily townhouse or a stacked unit. So these are very high-end multifamily units.
Who would be the home builders?
We're talking to a few different ones, but, you know, first we'd like to get closer to an approval, and then we have some national and local residential builders.
Okay.
So this is a view of the landscaping plan. The landscaping plan consists of, you know, street trees throughout the whole site. We've, basically, they, they, we are going to be meeting most of the requirements with, in terms of the green belt, the buffers, and also, we've also created a nice landscape, enhanced landscape between the single-family and the multifamily. Throughout the whole site, the open spaces are also landscaped. It's just a much more enlarged graphics of the landscape we're proposing, which includes, you know, green belt, you know, staggered two rows of evergreen trees. But we also added some canopy trees or deciduous trees or, to kind of break that solid wall of evergreen trees. We've included some landscaping in the open space where, where the meandering trails are, so that the landscaping, as you travel through the landscaping, there's trees in between, so you kind of are meandering to a park-like settings. This is the backside of the single-family, street trees throughout, and then the, and meandering path to, that connects the clubhouse facility... And then, and meandering path to, that connects the clubhouse facility, more meandering path that connects to the main collector system, as well as, as well to the single-family here that meanders through here. In the multifamily, again, we landscape it more than, over and above, that's typically required. Open space is landscaped through where the pedestrian is kind of meandering into the landscape. We provide an extensive buffer along M53, even though there's, there's a lot of vegetation already here. We're still providing a two rows of evergreen trees between this unit and M53. And we're also providing two rows of evergreen trees along here as much as we can until this road kind of tapers to just with the right-of-way. And again, extensive buffering here, green belt requirement. We meet the green belt requirement here. One of the waivers we're requesting is because of the road alignment here, we cannot provide the minimum requirement at this entrance, as well as waiver here because of how this right-of-way is. There's just no room where we can plant some, some evergreen trees along here.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that about the entrance?
Because of this road alignment here, that's required by the county, this, this, this entrance tapers out and then comes back. So, we meet the 20-foot here, but at this entry point, we don't meet the 20-foot.
So, you don't meet the, the entrance standard that Washington Township has? You know, I know, I see you have the boulevard.
There is a boulevard there. But, we have to align up with this, with this, this drive across the street.
For the county standard.
For the county standard.
Is that required by the county, or?
Yeah.
Either have to have a certain distance apart from each other, or they?
Got to line up, but being that there's a house directly across, they can't line up.
So, then, the grand entrance standard won't be met, or can't be met?
How far apart would that entrance have to be to meet their standard? Do you know that, Mike?
It'd be probably right in the middle of their parcel frontage, therefore, making it pretty unbuildable.
So, they would lose density?
It would be an alignment issue where I don't know how you would have.
I mean, if they had to move that closer down or to the?
They still have boulevard entrance. They're still landscaping there. What do you say? You can explain the dimensional variance better.
Yeah, so, the dimensional variance is more so for the road buffer from the property line. So, that's, that's what they're talking about there, on that screening. There was, there was an issue on this submission that wasn't there on previous ones with the frontage trees. There hadn't been a waiver requested for that, but that's a separate issue in our letter from what he's talking about. This one, they've had the waiver requested in their previous submissions.
And that waiver's been requested to Washington or to the county?
To the board.
To Washington. That's a waiver from your zoning ordinance.
And that waiver is granted by the township board?
Yes, at the time of approval.
Wow.
But, this, but this commission needs to recommend to the township board whether or not.
We think the waiver should be granted.
Yep, and those are listed in the master deed that was submitted.
Alternatively, what would an option be for them if they, if we chose not to do that? The entrance would have to go further to the west, correct?
Yes.
And if they did that and met the standard, they would obviously lose a building or two by doing so. And it would put more green space between the existing homes and their development. Is that correct? Which is what I've been saying all along. I, I just, I, the density is too much. Your, your existing homes that abut this are staring down the barrel of massive buildings, which, I get it, they can do that, but, and then claiming the open space to be the setback requirements for the buildings. I just, I, I don't, that's my opinion. I guess it is what it is. These are the things I said at the first meeting, and we're on the fourth, and nothing's changed.
Voice it, yeah. That's Chair Bar. Paulino, did I hear you say your open space increased to 19%?
Yes, it's 19%. I think the last one was probably at 16, I want to say, or 17.
Okay.
So.
We're still dealing with the issue with the open space overlapping the setback requirements, aren't we? So, you know, that's, that's how you calculate, how we calculate.
It's, yeah, and I get that, and there's a, there's an issue there. But, I mean, you're talking about trying to preserve your resources, and they're only preserving the resources on the property that are required to be preserved. They're not doing anything beyond the minimum requirements to develop this property. There's nothing here that, PUD give and take. There's a lot of take, but I really don't see the give. There's, I mean, your, your houses are at the very minimum standards of an R1B. No side entrance garages, no, no aesthetically pleasing things. And I know it's not required, but you're not going above and beyond.
For the corners, we've met all of those. We've exceeded, if you look at all the lots.
You gave the five feet that you were required to give. Again, again.
There's also lost units or count by, you know, your standard on your master plan, by close to 85 units. And you can argue back and forth on the, the outdoor space and the requirement of that. But, we did increase it. We've increased the size of the clubhouse that we had talked about the last time by over, you know, close to 1,800 square feet. So, I mean, we're definitely giving and trying to, I mean, we're not coming back four times just because we have, you know.
I get it. I just, I mean, when?
We think it looks great. We think it fits in. We've changed the elevations.
I guess we have a difference of opinion.
Yeah, we can all respect that, for sure. I think we've come to the table a few different times.
Well, I think one of my concerns is, you know, last time you were pre-planning, we talked about the value of properties, and somebody, I think it was you, you mentioned about 500,000. Now, we're looking 600,000, 700,000 as estimate. Rents between, you know, 25, $3,500 a month on these units. You are building an upscale community here. So, when I start looking at what you're building now, is, you know, every time you come back, it seems like it's, you know, the buildings are getting, you know, a little nicer, which is nice. But, now, you know, at $700,000, I'm starting to look for those side entrance garages that Barry's talking about. You know, are, you know, 70-foot lots for a $700,000 home?
Again, the starting is in cases.
But, but you understand, you know, where it's going. I mean, these properties aren't.
We're not trying to decrease the value. We're trying to increase the value.
Right, but not starter homes. You know, you know, it's, they're nice houses, and there's a lot of them packed into a small area. And I think, one of the things that I had an issue with was, was looking at your overall plan and the balance of amenities from one side to the other. Your single-family has got a little bit of open space in it, and you've stacked the amenities to the multifamily, which I can understand some of the logic there, but you've got some amenities that you've outlined, like the clubhouse. You know, it's, that's an amenity that you've designated for use for only half of the community. So, if I'm looking at this as a, as a single development, is that really something that I could consider as an amenity for the community? Since only the multifamily, according to you, are going to be able to use that amenity in the, you know, in that space around it?
But, I think the owner that's going to buy any type of home, whether it's $600,000, $700,000, whether it's a corner lot or a 70-foot lot, they're going to have their own decisions to do if they want to add their own pool, you know, their neighbors. That's a community itself. And the clubhouse is in addition for a renter, maybe a long-time renter. Maybe some of those could be for sale condominiums as well. So, you have to look at it in a different perspective of ownership and.
I understand that. With owning the house, you've got the yard, you've got some more space. But, still, if I've got a, if I had a clubhouse with a pool, you know, 50 feet away from my house, and I've got a little kid that wants to go swimming, and I tell him they can't go swimming because that's for the people that live over there, you know, it's, I see it, you know, is a bit of a segregated development. And I want to, and I want to look at it as a whole, but I, but I tend to see that, that it's not balanced side to side in what it offers. I want to go back to the point Barry made, too, about that gentleman that lives next to the boulevard entrance. You're looking at pushing that over and asking for a waiver there.
I think we're asking for the waiver to meet the county standards, though.
I understand that.
We're not pushing, I mean, and if we zoom in, the distance from that, and that first building, I don't have it there, but I would say it's at least 200 feet. I mean, it's not something that's right next to it. It's probably 100 feet.
And Barry, I'll just add, if you did turn that, you know, if you put the road in the middle of their parcel, then they would have a building with the rear of the building facing directly east. So, just, that might be what you're going to get instead. But, I've got some of those same concerns over the placement of that entrance.
And keep in mind, too, that we did meet the, you know, as soon as we passed that, that entrance point and it turns west, we did meet that obligation of 20-foot buffer there of, you know, two staggered rows of evergreen trees throughout that, as far as we can take it.
Right, but you're not, and you're not looking to meet it in a lot of other places, because you just, you say you just don't have the property. One of the things that, that we talked about before you got relief from the township setback ordinance on that central road, was you approaching the, the other property owners to see whether or not you could, could access that property, perhaps buy some to meet that setback standard. Have you talked to the other property owners that are adjacent where you don't have the right-of-way to see if they would allow you to either plant or put an easement?
I think we've had that multiple times. I think, you know, we're, we're adding more buffers as much as we can when it comes to.
But, you know, there are ways to meet those screening requirements that I don't think you've explored.
Well, obviously, we, you know, it still takes a board approval, I believe, if we put a wall up or a decorated fence up there, correct? Is that, is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm saying, go to the guy that owns the property to the south of you and say, can we plant like 20 trees on your yard at the corner where we don't have enough room to screen? You know, it meets the, you know, it would meet the intent of the standard, and, you know, the guy might like a few more trees on his property. I don't know. We're trying to, we're trying to make it so that it meets the standards.
Was there a question about paving one of the roads? Is that an issue? 31-mile road being paved? Yeah, it was a long time ago. We discussed that. Is that road going to be paved, or?
We've had, you know, very preliminary discussions with the township and with, you know, possibly other neighbors and other developers that may, you know, have used to that. So, we're, we're open to a conversation.
Okay. Because what I recall initially, I think when this whole thing started, that there was some talk about, I thought, the developer was going to pave the road. There was discussions of that. You're going back many, many years ago. Well, but that's just to your point. Okay, but do you recall something about the paving the road? I mean, does that sound logical? I mean, Mike, does that?
Certainly, everyone, well, I don't want to say everyone, because we made some people like dirt roads. But, certainly, there would be a desire for that road to be paved, and it is a very significant cost. It's off-site, obviously, can't be required as a part of this development. But, cooperation between all those property owners, I think, is what always has been said.
Okay.
Some momentum of a development happening is what usually makes that start to go. Nothing's been built here yet except for one small development on the south side of the road, which is 20 units or so.
So, like Mike said, it's an off-site development, it has off-site requirements, so you cannot contingent any approval of this point on paving a 31-mile road.
Very good. I'm going to think back why the issue ever even came up, if that's the case.
I just think it's always been a point of discussion of, yes, as more and more things happen here, at some point, it's going to need to be paved.
Okay. Very good. Commissioners, anything else?
So, here's a bird's-eye view of the project, just to kind of give you guys a more additional illustration. Here's looking at it west, next to the single-family. This is the view coming into that curve. There's a lot of existing vegetation there. This is kind of the view. View A is kind of a bird's-eye view as you're turning, looking west. The view B is, again, looking west. This view C here is, is this green belt with all these evergreen trees along this side over here. This is some bird's-eye view of the open space, including the clubhouse. View A is looking at it going this way, the view here. So, view B is looking at it from this trailway here. You can kind of see this trail coming through here to the clubhouse. And then, view C is looking over here, and this is that trailway that connects, that goes around to the clubhouse. This is some entrance elevation views. This is the multifamily off of 31-mile road, view A. Here's looking at it going west. Entry monument is the boulevard, decorative lights coming in. This is the entrance for the single-family, right here, arrows right here. This is looking at it, view B is looking at it this way, and view C is straight above. Now, these, this is some of the open space views. This is a pedestrian trailway between the single-family and the multifamily. As you can see, I mean, it's, it's, it's quite spacious there. You know, keep in mind that there's, there's a 50-foot setback from here to the single-family lot. You know, these houses here, the buildings are probably set back another 50 feet where these houses begin. So, it's, it's really quite nice, and this is what I mean, where you plant evergreen trees and trees, and you're kind of meandering this, like a park-like setting. This view B here is shooting over here. As you turn here with the pedestrian path, you're looking across the pond. You're looking at the clubhouse here. This view C is the pond to the north side here. There's a connection here from the single-family that kind of meanders to. This view D is this path here, looking at, and you're looking at this multifamily here, which is these guys right here. And view C here is looking at it coming around here. And this is, this area here is really the farm area right here. So, basically, in summary, you know, we're proposing, you know, 298 units, residential units. Out of that, 108 of it is, is single-family, 70-foot by 143 lots. 190 multifamily, 54 townhouses, 36 stacked units. In terms of density, again, you know, density, we are not, we're not asking for the maximum. We're really in the medium-lowmer side of the density in terms of overall. And then, open space, we're providing, you know, the minimum requirement's 15%, 10.43 acres. We're providing 19%. In terms of community benefits, we're providing a diverse housing options. Dedicated community park and recreation. Clubhouse facility is now 3,200-plus square feet, which includes swimming pools and fitness center. We provide a meandering trail system that connects to the connector walks. In there, we're proposing, you know, park benches and pet stations, fountain features, gazebos and pergola, enhanced landscaping throughout the site. Provide, you know, part of the community benefits, also providing a tax base, as well as providing a housing stock for the future growth of Washington Township.
Well, we appreciate you, again, being here, and it's been an effort, obviously, by all yourselves and the planning commission, the staff here. And from the beginning, the concept is something I've always liked, diverse housing. But, it sure doesn't seem like the details where the devil is living are adding up as far as the feeling I have on which way this may go. So, I, I don't have anything else to add. I did want to ask Kayla a question. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Kayla. Your conclusion, and I like your conclusion, in that it is a, like a Plan A, Plan B, door number one, door number two. You make a recommendation on one hand, and then you state that if we were to approve it, that a minimum, certain things would be approved. I have to ask the applicants, have you, have you read that? What do you think of that?
Yes, we will comply with all those requirements.
That would be what Kayla has suggested.
So, there's, I believe, four or five items on that?
There's four.
Just see that.
See, the thought I have is this. You've been at this for a year. You know, you've?
Been a year?
A year. I mean, you've, you've come from the five-yard line to the opposing team's five-yard line.
We're on the same team.
All right. Barry's a little different.
I don't think you cross midfield.
He didn't think about midfield, okay. But? But I would, I would, you know, I feel that it's been a work in progress for so long, and the roots are so deep. I have no problem with, with, you know, giving you a chance to fulfill what, and I don't know if my planning commissioners agree with what Kayla's, you know, second version is, if they were to be met, like you said, you would, you would complete.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question before you get too?
Sure, go ahead.
It goes to Kayla and then to Chris. I noted in the, in the, in your notes that you had said that in the submitted plan, the clubhouse still showed 70 and 175 square feet?
Correct.
Okay, and I know you guys said you've changed that. When we look at what we're approving tonight, Christine, are we approving the submission or are we approving what they're telling us that they've done?
Well, actually.
And that is, that is what I want, I want to know.
You're approving the submission unless they've indicated some changes and their will, the approval could be conditioned upon those changes and receiving revised plans.
And again, a recommendation, so the board would look at it again before they give their final.
Okay, because there were, there were a couple of things like that that popped up. I noticed you'd submitted a photometric plan with that also. And we discussed before the city's dark sky ordinances and the fixtures, again, specified in the dark skies plan don't meet our dark sky ordinance. There are 4,000 kelvin, and we can't go over 3,000 in order to meet our ordinance. So you would either need a waiver for that again or need to change those fixtures in order to be in compliance.
Yeah.
The only plans you're looking at are the ones that you have. But you guys are a recommending body. So if there's changes that need to be made to those plans, they could be made in between the planning commission and the township board. But they would have to be reviewed and approved by staff before against the township board. And remember that if there's a motion to approve, you need to address any waivers. There's a number of waivers from the underlying zoning district that have been asked for, so those have to be included. In any motion with the PUD. PUD developments are extensive, they've got a lot of moving parts, and you've got a lot of requirements in your ordinance. First and foremost, you've got to look at your eight special land use standards. In order to approve a PUD, you've got to be able to find affirmative as to all those eight standards. In any motion to approve or deny, must go through those standards, as well as the criteria that's set forth in the PUD provisions of your zoning ordinance, section 3.17. So it's been a year-long process, but there's a lot for you guys to process as well. That motion's got to say, you know, how they meet the criteria, why they meet it, why they don't meet it, or what is lacking.
Yeah, and all eight standards must be met. If going through those standards, you know, if you come across two or three that you do not believe meet those standards, then it fails. So you don't have to go through all eight and say, well, they meet one, two, five, six, and seven. You, you, you can stick, if you're making that motion for fail, you go that route. If they're going to pass it, you have to show how they pass those eight standards.
And if you're making motions to deny based on the standards, you've also got to say how they don't meet them. You don't have to restate the entire standard in your motion, you can hit a few key words or summarize them. But you can't just say they don't meet standards one, two, or four, or yes, they meet all eight standards. If you do that, I'm going to jump up and down and scream and yell.
They do by discussion.
So then, like the.
No, you cannot do it by discussion, it's got to be included in the motion.
So then, with them not doing the grand entrance, then we'd have to specify that, that that's acceptable?
But they did do the grand entrance.
We did do a grand entrance.
Yes.
They did, they've got the boulevard.
They just did the boulevard, they didn't do the.
No, we did do the boulevard.
No, I saw the boulevard, I get that, but what I'm, what I'm referring to as like the landscaping of the.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I missed that, I'm sorry.
It's the separation between, yes.
The distance from the, the.
Got it.
East end of the south, east end of the west, and.
And see that little green strip right there?
Then I saw.
That's supposed to be 20 feet, which is the thicker portion all the way to the road.
I was talking on 31, though. You know, it was my understanding there was supposed to be landscaping by.
This is all landscape. This isn't a landscape plan, this is just an.
Okay, fair enough.
All kinds of landscape.
Fair enough. Thank you.
No, both, both entries are landscape, it is T over and above that.
Okay, appreciate it.
And if, if you're looking for that waiver list and you don't have the master deed in front of you, it is on page five of our review letter as well.
The waiver.
Hey, commissioners, any more questions? If not, we can entertain a motion. Sounds like there's no more questions. No more comments? Abigail, you look like you're on the edge.
I wanted to ask, do we normally make our decision at this meeting or do we wait a month?
That's what I was just asking.
No, we.
Well, this is our fourth meeting.
Right, yeah. Generally, you, if you hold a public hearing, you don't make a meeting, don't make a decision the same night as a public hearing.
Okay.
You wait. But if you're ready to make a decision, you make a decision. If you need more information, you can ask the applicant for additional information. But remember, the motion's got to be specific and it's going to be lengthy.
Okay. Whoever is ready?
I guess I'll move forward. I, I, I'm going to make a motion to denial, deny the formal planned unit development application of the Washington Creek, RSL 24401, or 0401, 313. I don't know if it'd be with or without consideration, but without consideration of the following waivers requested in the underlying zonings, which are irrelevant because moving to denial based on special land use standards and the findings of fact. I think it lacks a benefit to the community due to density, lack of open space. The, it's, I don't see the innovative, this is an innovative project in any aspect. Doesn't preserve any significant resources beyond what is required by the ordinance. The landscaping not meeting the minimum requirements and needing, needing waivers. The density not adding to the economic aspects of the land uses in the surrounding area. And allowing an overly dense PUD will have other developers asking to forego densities that we seek throughout the township. Anything I might need to, did I address what needs to be addressed or do I need to address any of the other?
You need to address eight.
Yeah.
Special land use standards.
And then I'll go through that. Suppose use of this such location character will be in harmony of the appropriate orderly development of the surrounding neighborhoods. I feel that it does not. It, the neighboring areas, I think it will negatively impact their values and also the the screening and whatnot because of the lack of trees that are, we're asking for waivers. Nature. That's one. What's that? I, item, or number five, I don't think it relates harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of the adjacent land uses, which I did bring up in my previous motion. And.
If I may.
Yes.
We need to expand on how it does that.
Based on the density and the, the density, the landscaping requirements, the open space, not, not adding to the economic aspects, aspects of the properties around them, I don't believe it does. I don't see the necessary public convenience as, at this proposed location. I mean, other than, it, it is a need for the community, however, at this dense, there's nothing about this, about this property that leads to, leads to a convenience for the, other than the property owner being able to develop as densely as he possibly can. Public health, safety, and welfare being protected. I don't see a problem with that. They, they do, they do, other than the 20-feet buffer that would be required for the county road division. And it's. Find the location. It's not designed to eliminate possible nuisances to the neighboring properties. With the buffers being eliminated.
Lack of adequate screening?
What?
Lack of adequate screening?
Well, that's the buffers that need to be created. Again, the land, the open space just doesn't comply. Or anything else anybody needs to add to that motion that I did not state?
John, you look like you're thinking.
No, I'm, I'm, I think Barry did a good job of getting, getting that in there. It's a difficult one to, there's a lot to cover, and we've been at this a long time.
Correct. Okay, we have a motion on the table. Counselor, you got a motion? You okay for somebody to second?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas seconds, chairbearer. Dana, roll call.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Sacco?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Jasky?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Chaplin?
Yes, to deny.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes, to deny.
Ms. Hall?
Yes, to deny.
Of course, that's just a recommendation to the board.
Thank you, Barry, you're right, there is a recommendation to the board, they have the final authority. You have a final venue if you choose it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, now, implementation plan.
Has been moved.
On the agenda, it's going to be continued. I, I bring it up a little later, but it being on the agenda, we are postponing it to another day. Right, Kayla?
Right.
Monday, April 7.
That's the magic day.
That's the, all right, there, very good. Got a housing 30-minute video, parking 26-minute video, is this our training, our third training, or is this just implementation?
This is separate from that training.
Separate from training?
Yeah, so that's, that's a, the implementation program that we moved to the next agenda meeting is the outcome from the conversation we had last meeting, where we talked about your master plan goals and implementation and how we were going to carry that into 2025 as a work plan.
Okay.
So.
Very good.
It's drafted, we're just reviewing internally, and we'll bring it forward to you guys at the next meeting.
Okay, so we have to, what, approve the implement, implementation plan at this meeting or did we already do that last meeting?
Moving to the next meeting. We postponed it.
We're going to do it. It's got a couple of wild wings everywhere.
Okay. Ah, okay, very good. Very good.
And upstairs. Open a poll line for everybody.
Everybody ready for the big project update from President Posack?
Always excited.
Yes.
Not much to talk about, I was struggling to.
Oh, we don't believe it, Mike.
Just a quick, couple of quick ones.
I've got a whole list for you to talk about.
Oh, fantastic. The Washington Romeo Medical Center, if you drive by off of 30 Mile and M53, still under construction, building work is continuing. The ZF expansion, all the site work there is done, they are still working in the building, but site itself is in great shape and under punchless.
Are they doing their work in that new ZF building, Mike?
Inside the building?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if they've started to occupy any of those spaces yet.
Oh, okay.
But I just know that the stuff we care about outside is not done.
That's a pretty big project, that changeover, yeah.
Big, big project. The township board, you may recall, approved the, I'll use the word construction loosely, but some minor improvements to a vacant piece of right-of-way there at M53, kind of Van Dyke and Van Dyke, where it splits off to campground, it's the old Van Dyke, old Van Dyke Road right-of-way. That's going to be a sheriff's weigh station area where the motor carrier division can pull over large trucks, weigh them off in a safe corridor that's away from the road. We have a pre-construction meeting for that next Monday.
Scales?
It's, it's really, it's a portable scale that they actually use. It's not even as sophisticated as what you picture off the side of the freeway.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just a nice, safe area where a truck can pull off, there's a recessed platform in the pavement that they can place the scale in, do their weighing, be on their way, everybody's safe.
Nice.
Where Van Dyke used to be?
Yeah.
Campground extension.
We're good with Van Dyke used to be.
That's a nice.
Abby, I didn't even do an age joke or anything when you said we're.
Good, good.
So that one will start, now that the weather's starting to break, they'll get out there. Very minor improvements, but a nice, safe place for the sheriffs to use. And then we are working, the township board also approved a contract to install new entry signage at all the various points around the perimeter of the township. It's happening in a couple of phases, but we are in the fabrication phase with the sign manufacturers, so we'll start to see those later in the summer.
Yeah, yeah.
But going to make a big difference visually, really nice, nice welcome.
Have we got anything going at Hampton?
They've submitted engineering plans. Yep, we just saw them last, or this week, actually, yeah. So they're moving along, I think they're in with the building department or will be shortly, but we did just get.
That's going to be a nice addition to the village.
Yep.
Are you familiar with that, Kayla?
Mm-hmm.
Are you?
Yep, that came in right as I started.
Okay, very.
Washington Place, isn't that what we're calling it?
Yeah.
I don't think we're legally allowed to call it Hampton House, is that true?
I believe so. Just think of all the personal care services going in there.
There you go.
Ah, okay, all right, okay.
My piercing studio opens next week.
Can't wait.
That's all I have.
John, did you have anything on Michael?
Um, you know what, the only thing I was going to mention that cross-referes is you is the, we had Altair come in and ask for another delay. So for those of you that were around back in the day when they, they came through, they're asking for another two-year extension to hopefully let the economy approve where they begin that development.
Yeah.
And to just.
I'm sorry.
Altair at 26 and Beacons Field, like a, almost a seven-acre.
You talking about the high rack?
The senior apartments? Yeah, yep, and he did come in during, you know, during COVID, there was a, you know, it was.
Phil Regeri.
Yes, so, you know, in his defense, there, there was a, you know, a, a complete slowdown. It did impact him starting, and he is obviously working with the township for the sidewalk and the boardwalk.
And yeah, that, that portion, if you've driven by there, the, the clear span bridge, the pedestrian bridge over the drain is under construction now, so. And I think the township's installing the walk the rest of the way, which was a requirement of his site plan, but there's a mechanism in place for him to pay that back, so.
I was going to, I was wondering.
That will go all the way to.
If he was involved in that process.
In a while.
It was part of the PUD.
I figured. Okay, good.
In a while. Anything else, John, from?
Couple more things, just as an update from the board, the budget has been presented, so we're just in that waiting phase to finalize that, yay. Everybody loves that, your time of year. The, Department came, they are going to be getting at some point in the next three years, because that's how long the lead time is, a new ambulance, a new 100-foot ladder truck, some radios, some other in-cab computer equipment. They, they brought their Christmas list and we handed them a big old stocking full of stuff.
You had a check you could give them, huh, John?
Um, yep, and then, and this was mentioned, actually, this was mentioned in our last planning meeting, and I wanted to bring it up because I think it's a great thing. The old Thorington Schoolhouse over on Mound Road.
Oh, yeah.
31 Mile, the township finalized the deal, we've been working on that, I know Sam has been pushing that for a while.
A classic.
And we got on board with it to preserve that place, so as scary as it is looking now, it's going to be looking a lot better hopefully soon. The building trades over at Romeo High School is going to come in, and they're going to start stabilizing and renovating that property. It's going to be moved down 31 Mile Road where that cell tower is there on the south side. We've got 10 acres over there, half of that's going to be a fire campus, the other half is going to be a park. We're going to use that schoolhouse as a, an anchor to the park.
Beautiful. Oh, yeah.
It should be a, it's, it's a really, really nice piece of Washington history to capture. It's, I think it's the last schoolhouse out there that we could do that with.
Yeah.
It's a good thing you got it now because I'll tell you, it was about to go down real quick.
Yeah.
That roof opened up this winter.
Oh, did it?
Yeah, the roof's open.
It's ice cream.
So I was, I was worried.
Yeah, Abby, Abby has experience with moving houses.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
She moved one on her property.
DPW did a nice job, by the way.
We went there to watch it.
Cleaned that property up.
It doesn't move fast. For like.
Yeah.
They cleaned it up real.
Yeah, we're like, can we, we're going to grab a Snickers.
So.
Okay, you all set, John?
Well, there's one other thing that I'm going to make some other people talk about, too, because there was a meeting this morning, and Kayla was one of the presenters there. In the Macomb County Community Housing Needs Assessment kickoff meeting this morning over by the, by the jail air. If you want to expand on this, you, you know a lot more about it than I do, but I thought it was an interesting thing that's going to be coming and something that this board in particular should be paying attention to.
Okay.
Thanks, John. So Spalding De Decker is working with Amarrac Planning Services right now to do the housing needs assessment for Macomb County. That is through the Macomb County Regional Housing Partnership. And what it means is that we'll be analyzing data from all 21 municipalities in the county, 27, I apologize, and, and looking at what the housing needs are specifically.
and, and looking at what the housing needs are specific to that community. So, really analyzing the demographic trends, the types of housing that are needed by the demographics in that community, gaps between the number of units that are affordable and what's actually available on the market. We'll be looking at zoning policy for those communities as well as services that are provided by different housing needs organizations, so homelessness services, that type of aspect. So, really, it's a, a big assessment to collect all the data in one place so that it's easily feasible and the Macomb Housing, uh, Regional Housing Partnership can then take that data and those recommendations and get to work, because that's what their, their task to do. It's a coalition of government bodies, of nonprofit developers, of community servants agencies, working together for all the municipalities in Macomb County.
So, Spalding Decker is kind of borderbacking this effort, uh?
Yes, yep. We're teamed with one other firm. He, Dr. David Boston with Amarrac Planning Services. He's actually out of Florida. But he, you know, his, his research is all housing-related and he's done these studies in a few other places across the country, so. We're fortunate to be able to partner with him and bring the local Macomb, um, knowledge and pair that with his tried-and-true methods for analyzing the housing ecosystem.
What's the timeline?
So, we just kicked off this morning. We'll be looking to do our first engagement in May, so May 6th through 8th, if you want to highlight that on your calendar. We'll have at least one meeting, um, in the northern part of Macomb County and we'll actually, well, yes, that's, that's next on my list. We are hoping to have it here in Washington Township. We're gonna have a survey that goes out probably sometime, I would say in April, um, ahead of that meeting. That'll be an online community survey. We'll have the chance to fill it out in paper copy as well. And then we'll, in July, we'll come back with the results of the data in our preliminary recommendations and we'll host, um, community workshops again to get feedback on those recommendations, make sure that they're, one, specific to the community, embraced by the community, because we want anything that comes out of that assessment to really be actionable. We don't want to put a bunch of big ideas in there that, that nobody's gonna follow through with. That's, that's not the point of this study. It, it needs to be grounded in reality, so. That's the timeline, I would say. Plan, plan, we'll, we'll share that survey when it comes through, but plan on April for that and then May 6th through 8th for the first engagement hands-on.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kayla. That's exactly what I was gonna say.
That's very good. Well, we still got Kayla. We got a commission discussion. Zoning ordinance amendments. Continue discussion, D1 and design guidelines.
Do you have it in you? It's late here.
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's late. I mean, if we can do it the next time.
Yeah.
That would be fine.
You got the heat in the loin bar?
It's up to you guys. Um, I, I don't have a lot. I need to repeat on this, um, so I can give you a quick rundown and then you can, you know, decide if you want to discuss it further. What I, what I am hoping for at this meeting is that we can just get some agreement to set a public hearing date for your next meeting to move these forward. But Christine was kind enough to meet with Dana and I, uh, has it been? It's been almost a month now, I guess, a few weeks. Um, and we sat down with the Village District Design Guidelines as per our last meeting and talked about what we could really require in the zoning ordinance and what things we wanted to keep to the design guidelines. Some major changes where we, anything related to the architectural design of the building, we're keeping in the Village Design Guidelines. And you'll see in what we put in your packet, anything that's in blue is new from our last meeting. So, uh, we took out, you know, things like the, the roof slope and a few of the other requirements related to colors, that type of thing. But did say all buildings constructed in the Village District shall be consistent with the Washington Township Village Design Guidelines. Uh, and you'll note a new reference to Appendix B. Our intent then is that when we adopt these revisions, we'd also be adopting the design guidelines, well, not adopting, we'll be adding them to the zoning ordinance as an appendix, so people don't have to flip back and forth between, uh, separate documents.
So, it's an easy reference.
And it can be linked, it can be linked and, yeah.
It's not part and parcel of the zoning ordinance, they say, but it is referenced and it's an easy way for somebody to look at it and find it.
So, that'll be on line.
Not a scavenger hunt.
So, that'll be on line.
Yes.
Not a scavenger hunt.
Exactly. That way, it's a recommendation and you can twist them arms. Can't break them, but you can twist them.
It's a may.
You can twist them. Can't break them.
And then, um, the other standards that weren't related to the architectural design, for the most part, we were able to leave in the ordinance, but what we did was we added an intent statement in front of it to show what we are really trying to achieve from that standard and why it's relevant to the public health, safety, and welfare. So, those are the changes that are before you. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them tonight, but again, in, in order to keep this moving forward, we'd love to be able to, you know, get your consensus on moving forward to a public hearing next month.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
You think we're ready for a public hearing, commissioners?
If she thinks we're ready, we're ready.
Yeah.
And remember, you can make minor changes after the public hearing.
Yes.
If you do a complete substantial rewrite, then we gotta have another public hearing.
Do we need to schedule that or just have, have a motion?
We do have part of it.
Yeah, a motion instead of a public hearing.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's great. You did a great job. You, we talked about it. Council's, uh, definite recommendations on that.
Judge Christine's on top of us.
And I think we, we can get ourselves in, we're in a good spot where we won't get sued. We like that.
Yeah.
If you two are happy, you're happy.
And more importantly, implement your master plan.
Well, yeah, that's it.
In a defendable manner.
In the master plan and defendable manner.
All right, I wanna make a motion to schedule a public hearing on this matter.
For the April 10th meeting?
April 10th meeting. Okay, second. We got a support. Do we need roll call here? Can I say all in favor?
You can say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you, Kayla. We got it on the agenda. Anything else here, commissioners, for the good of the world? All right, I'll entertain a motion, and usually there's somebody who makes that motion. Oh!
Two, two quick questions, sir.
They're never quick, but go ahead.
To the podium, sir.
Please come to the podium.
At the board there.
Uh, number one, is there anything you guys can tell us at this commission about the Stellantis project?
Oh.
Any new updates that are public?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, no. I, we don't know anything. No updates.
You know, and things like that, you can always contact the planning department on any given day, but we, we enjoy your presence tonight.
Oh, he's a supporter.
Yeah, please don't stop coming. He's a supporter there.
All right, number two.
Number two, Kayla, I'm not criticizing what you do or what you say. The only thing is, please understand, when you talk about what is current zoning versus what the developers are requesting, could you put that in, the current zoning is 10 units per acre and the, the developers requesting 50 units per acre?
We'll specify it in detail, yeah.
Because what you said earlier, you talked about, I think, percentages and things like this, and it wasn't a direct comparison in my small brain that understood exactly what you meant and what they were asking for and what the current zoning is.
Yeah, absolutely. And we do provide all that information in our review letters as well, but I will make sure to note that on the, on the record.
Is the public, is the public privy to the packet?
Yes. It's on the one.
All that is on the packet. She does detail it out in, at length, and if you ever get a chance to download the packet, that's a great place to start to get that information.
Yeah.
I just thought.
We can't, that packet's really-
I'll make sure to say it as well.
And if she forgets?
Yeah.
Get up and ask. Get up and ask.
But we talked about no redundancy, so I didn't want to-
But if you're getting up and asking a question like that, you're fine.
And this is actually a, a good thing to bring up for the planning commission, too, because I know it's, it comes up with these PUD developments especially, where the developers start talking about the range of densities that, um, you know, are required by the master plan. Your master plan is not ordinance, um, and so we, we try to really stay away from that range. We can tell you what the future land use category is in your master plan. There are densities that were proposed, um, and for Washington Creek, you know, they're, they're within that range that was proposed in the multifamily overlay. Um, and so again, there's some specific criteria that are, you know, set with that future land use of the multifamily overlay. It's hard to get into that range discussion. Um, when, when we're talking about the zoning with a PUD, it's really not applicable because they're coming in through the PUD process to get flexibility from, yes, from the zoning standards.
Your master plan comes in more when you're talking about a rezoning. When they're coming in for a PUD, if they're not complying with the master plan, they're not coming.
Thank you, councillor. Interesting. Very good.
Chris is simplifying my, uh, yes, my long speech here. Gonna hold up the sign.
Good, that's it down.
They gotta comply with the master plan when talking about PUD or you're talking about any development, period.
See what you started?
I mean, do I, as a, just a general public guy, do I have to go now and review, do you need a plan to understand what you guys-
You can always stop then.
Are, are, are allowing?
No. Call Dana, and if you have a question when you're sitting out here.
She'll explain. I love Dana. I bother her more than this.
If you have a question when you're sitting out there, get up, ask the question directly.
Yeah.
We're all public servants and, uh, we, we expect those phone calls and as a public servant, we do our best to convey to our constituents and residents of this community the best we can what we're doing. So, it's, you know, Dana obviously is, is paid to do that job and, and her staff are phenomenal of what they do and they can convey that to you.
She's gotta have wine.
Girl scout cookies, okay. Okay, now. Where's our man, Pawnstar?
Excuse me?
All right.
Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's fine meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.